We will begin with selectmen announcements and updates. Selectmen DeWitt?
Oh, very short ones tonight. Actually, as we speak, downstairs in room 308, the Town Meeting Members Association is holding a moderator's postmortem discussion on the outcomes of the November town meeting. On Thursday this week at 7:00 PM, at Wheelock College in the lecture room, the Friends of Fairstead and the Greenspace Alliance, among others, are sponsoring a lecture by Boston University Professor Daniel Bluestone. The title is "Dwellings in the Landscape," and it's all about how housing fits into the broader environment. What's interesting to us locally is that there are examples from Brookline that will be a part of this discussion. At the Brookline Art Center, the Artists Market Place with handmade art and craft works will continue this weekend on Saturday and Sunday from noon until 4:00 PM. And also, there is a set of special classes being offered in a holiday session that will run this week and next week through December 19th. If you want more information, go to www dot, all one word, Brookline Arts Center dot com. And finally, on Sunday afternoon, the Winter Farmers Market again will be held in the Arcade Building at 318 Harvard Street from noon until 5:00 PM.
I'm going to add two quick items. One is, I have the pleasure of attending a very red rededication of the Washington Square clock at 3:30 this afternoon, and we thank the Washington Square Merchants Association for all their hard work in getting that important landmark back up and running, and very precisely. I also want to announce, and I had a written document about it, but I think I left it in the other room, that the 20th Annual Town Employees Toy Drive is currently going on. They collect new toys, but you don't have to wrap them. You can drop them off at several locations, and that's where I'm going to have trouble remembering. One I know is the Public Safety Building.
One's downstairs here in the mailroom.
In the mailroom downstairs.
And through December 19th, they collect them.
Through December 19th. So please, if you have the will and the generosity, kindly get a new toy and help the town employees make Christmas a successful one for people who can't necessarily afford to do it themselves. Any other announcements?
Yeah, I'll mention, we had what I thought was a very successful Gateway East public hearing in conjunction with Mass DOT looking at, focusing on bicycle accommodations, and a number of citizen groups made some presentations, put a lot of work into coming up with suggestions. I think it gave us all some really great ideas, and perhaps there might be some actionable suggestions out of it.
Very good. Anything else? Very good. We'll move on then to, is there someone for public comment?
Yes.
Mr. Chris.
Hi. My name's Alan Christ. I'm a Lawrence parent and a town meeting member in Precinct Four. I just wanted to voice my support for a fully funded debt exclusion, which covers the cost of the devotion renovation, as well as an override, which meets Superintendent Lupini's long-range funding goals for the town schools. A fully funded override will minimize class sizes and allow for adequate support, staff, and specialist ratios, while also funding numerous other areas such as K-38 world languages, special education programs, and ELL programs. They're critical to maintaining the quality of Brookline School. In addition, a debt exclusion which funds devotion will give the town maximum flexibility to fund future CIP projects at Driscoll, Pierce, Baker, and the high school to address the current overcrying problem. Problem, sorry. However, despite my personal support, I'm very concerned that this badly needed override will not pass. As you know, there are many Brookline parents with children in the schools who strongly favor the debt exclusion and override. However, we account for only approximately 20% of the registered voters in the town. In light of this, it's critical for the selectmen to demonstrate in the next few months that the health of our schools is directly tied to the health of the town, and that there's a correlation between our schools and our property values. Also, building this understanding can be done in three ways. Conducting town-wide surveys, opinion polling, and community outreach to all voters to ensure that adequate data is collected about voter preferences, and to ensure that voters will understand the impact of a failed override. The second is broadening the scope of an override slightly, so it includes issues which concern seniors, as well as other residents without children. And the third is developing a pyramid structure for the override, which would be similar to the previous Lincoln override, as a means to ensure support for at least a basic level of funding if a fully funded or enhanced option does not pass. Again, to reiterate, I strongly support a fully funded override, and I feel that it's an achievable goal if the town begins as soon as possible with these measures to ensure that there's a broad base of support. Many interested parents are willing to help out with this process, but there needs to be a plan in place for us to get on board.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Can I just briefly respond to that? Because I appreciate everything you've said, but I just wanted to let you know that the town itself, that in past overrides, there's been a committee of volunteers set up to disseminate some of that information. We can't actually, I believe, we cannot actually solicit the voters on behalf of the override. We certainly can provide data and information, but I think, as has been done in the past, a volunteer group is going to have to kind of spearhead the actual solicitation of votes effort, because legally, I don't believe we can do that.
Thank you, Selectmen Daley, for pointing that out. And let's move on to our miscellaneous calendar. First item is the question of approving the minutes of the December 2nd meeting, which, by the way, I apologize that I was not here. I had a business obligation that could not be otherwise dealt with, so.
I have given some corrections and amendments to Kate.
Anyone else? No others? Okay. Well, I move that we approve the minutes as amended by Selectmen Daley. All in favor say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
And chair will abstain, and the motion passes. So the minutes, as amended, are approved. Next, we need a very brief discussion of our upcoming meeting schedule, specifically around the holidays. Mr. Kleckner, you want to?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the question initially was whether or not the board should meet on the Tuesday of December 23rd and December 30th. They both fall nearby the holidays. And my thought was that, given all of the responsibilities and deadlines associated with the override, that it might not be prudent for the board to skip two full weeks during this period of time. So that's really the issue. Another issue came up yesterday, that next week's meeting is on the first evening of Hanukkah, and so I raised that issue, because one person who wanted to participate in the meeting indicated that they would not because of that reason. So those are the two issues.
So my personal belief, my personal calendar, is that I don't think I'm going to be here on December 22nd. I do plan to be back here, I'm sorry, on the 23rd. I do plan to be here on December 30th. So for my purposes, skipping the December 23rd meeting and keeping the December 30th meeting would make the most sense. And, you know, while the first night of Hanukkah, I can remember this board meeting in the past on the first night of Hanukkah, it is an important family night for some families. And I'm thinking, if we're going to be missing the 23rd meeting, maybe moving our weekly meeting to the Thursday night might be.
Thursday, the?
Eighteenth.
Thursday, yeah, the 18th, exactly. So I don't know how people feel about that.
Do you have a zoning board meeting that night, Allison? Do they typically, will they be meeting in this room?
They do have a short meeting on the 18th. It should be over by 7:30.
We could, well, we could probably.
What about the 17th? Is the second night of Hanukkah important? No? Not so much?
Far, far less so, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I don't like to exclude anyone, but.
Yeah, so what about the 16th, then?
No, the 17th. 16th is Tuesday. We'd be looking at 17th Wednesday or.
Excuse me. 17th.
Yeah. I'm fine for the 17th.
I'm fine with the 17th, sir.
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Okay, so I think that, let me just double check my calendar, I'm sorry. Okay, so that's next week's meeting, including the executive session, which we just discussed. Mr. Kleckner will be on December, on Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 17th.
December 17th. And there'll be no meeting on, for the week of December 22nd, including no meeting on December 23rd, which is the usual Tuesday night. We will schedule a meeting for the evening of December 30th, the Tuesday night. Okay? Moving on, item C on our miscellaneous calendar is the question of approving a transfer within the Planning and Community Development Department. Ms. Steinfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. As you know, the town hired Maria Morelli to provide professional and administrative support relative to the 40B application submitted by Chestnut Hill Realty. Ms. Morelli has been doing an extraordinary job on behalf of the town. Her attention to detail has resulted in a process that has been transparent, and that has run, quite honestly, rather smoothly. Her professional support has far exceeded our expectations. She's coordinated all of our interdepartmental review, and has herself reviewed all of the plans, all of the technical reports, and provided extraordinary amount of input, not only to the Planning Department, but all of the departments involved. However, it's been a year. We've had seven extensions, and our contract funds have run out for Ms. Morelli. I am therefore requesting that you authorize an extension of her contract, a nominal increase in her hourly rate by $3, and a total increase in her contract by $12,600. These funds are available as a result of vacancies in the Planning Department.
Okay. Questions from board members?
No, I will just say that while I have complained about many things throughout this Hancock Village process, I do think Ms. Morelli has been doing a very good job.
And I agree with that.
I agree.
Okay. We'll see no objection, then. I move that we authorize the transfer in the Department of Planning and Community Development budget from the payroll account in the amount of $12,600 to the professional services account in that same amount. All in favor, say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And I further move that we approve and execute a contract amendment in the amount of $12,600 with Maria Morelli for professional services relative to the Chestnut Hill Realty 40B application. All in favor, say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We've got.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. We have four temporary alcoholic beverage licenses. I'll take them all together. I move that we approve the following temporary alcoholic beverage licenses, and these are all, these are all kinds. They're all all kinds alcohol. December 12th, from 5:30 PM to 11:00 PM at, and by the way, these are all at the Auto Museum, 15 Newton Street. December 12th, 5:30 to 11:00 PM for rehearsal dinner. December 17th, for holiday luncheon from 12:00 noon to 5:00 PM. December 18th, for the Harvard Business Dinner at 5:30 to 10:30 PM. And December 19th, for Health Edge Holiday Party, 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. All in favor, say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, we have some boards and commission interviews. And the first is an applicant for our Complete Streets Study Committee. It's Gus Streisand here. I think I saw him. Come on forward, Gus. Good evening, Gus. Tell us, you volunteer for a lot of things, I think everybody knows you, but tell us a little bit why you're interested specifically in the Complete Streets Study Committee, and what you hope to bring to that committee.
Well, I think I can probably bring quite a list of experience to Complete Streets, because for my work environment, I've been working at the same firm, it is BSC Group, about since 1998, on similar kinds of projects. We have done work in Belmont, similar kinds of, where we really put great emphasis on the promotion of walking, bicycling, and other modes of transportation. And I think I can bring with the other projects, with I've worked in the town, such as the Palm Delfi, participated in, also in the establishment of the traffic policy and procedures, mind you. I think I can bring quite a bit of experience, and also maybe a more engineering approach to this committee.
All right. Questions for Gus? Did you say you worked with Belmont on this, on Complete Streets?
I think it's, well, it's not Complete Streets, but I think it's an all-topic project, but I think at the moment it's under construction, and it is one of those arterial projects. We have whereby two lanes in each direction, parking on each side, lots of commercial development on all these different streets. So I think therefore really bringing sensitivity to, and sensitivity to the interest of all users to that project and to the town.
Got it. All right. Are you pretty familiar with the statute itself, the Complete Streets program?
Well, familiar. I know that the Complete Streets has, Mass DOT has set aside $20 million for over a four-year period, so that is, there's $5 million for each, for most towns, for towns who have provided an application process, as well as, I think one of the requirements is also that you have to have a policy manual in place. And I think this is one of the further requirements for that.
Good. Any other questions for Gus?
Only just to be sure that Transportation Board doesn't come into conflict with the Complete Streets Study Committee as far as your time is concerned.
I don't think that will be an issue.
I didn't think so.
Well, Mr. Englander, who proposed the Complete Streets Committee, is also a member of the Transportation Board.
I know, and that means we'll have, well, I guess what I'm worrying about is, if the whole Transportation Board joins Complete Streets, what happens, anyway?
Well, we have, what, two applicants from the Transportation Board?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm just concerned that we get a balanced board with a balance of viewpoints, a balance of skills.
Sure. The one thing that I can bring is really is like the experience with that kind of work, as well as maybe my PE license, and having worked a lot, done a lot of stuff in town. Hopefully that helps.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Appreciate your time. Nick Schmidt?
Hi.
Come on up, Nick.
Hi.
Tell us about yourself and why you're interested.
Well, the good thing is I'm not on a board.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I want to apologize, I'm kind of recovering from a weird flu-like thing, so I've got a cough drop in my mouth. But anyway, I'm relatively new to Brookline. I've lived here since May 2013. I moved previously from Atlanta, and then I've lived in DC, and from Georgia, so I've been kind of bouncing around. I'm actually a, I'm a multimodal planner at Parsons Brinkerhoff. I've been planning for about six and a half years now, from all sorts of modes, from motor vehicles, buses, rapid transit, to commuter rail, freight rail, pedestrians, cyclists. So I think I can come at this from a, you know, a nice multimodal perspective. So I'm interested in this not only, you know, because I work with this sort of subject, but I'm also interested in this because I like Brookline a lot. I moved here specifically for transportation purposes and the quality of life that it offers. I'm from the South, where we don't really have many great options on how to get around.
You don't have snow either.
That's true. Well, when we do, we freak out if it's fantastic. The snow that was just, I guess it was yesterday, that would have, that would have shut Atlanta down for like three years. So I'm also, I'm interested in being on this committee, you know, from a personal standpoint, too, because I think this is a really great time for this to happen in the town. I think that a lot of people like myself are looking for a more complete multimodal transportation system. There's a lot of, there's a lot of demographic shifts going on right now in how people view transportation and what they want out of it. And so, you know, I think I can come at it from that perspective, both professionally and, you know, personally, in my personal life. So, yeah, I mean, I'm just glad to be a potential part of this, and if I can help out in any way, I would love to be a part of the process.
Very good. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Schmidt?
Well, I actually thought his, I saw some of the articles and things he'd done, which seemed to be very closely related. Is there anything that you've done that was a Complete Streets kind of project or activity up till now?
Yeah, yeah. I actually just completed a Complete Streets project.
Ah, okay.
In Burlington, Vermont.
Ah, all right.
So in the time, it's kind of odd. In the time I've lived here, in the year and a half I've lived here, I've actually, I work in Boston, but I've been working primarily in Vermont.
You travel.
And Rhode Island.
Got it.
Yeah, at least, you know, via email, and sometimes, you know, traveling in person. But, yeah, we just completed a project for Complete Streets for North Avenue in Burlington.
Oh, okay. Great.
Selectmen Daley?
Yeah, I just, I just want to ask you, are you a bicyclist, Mr. Schmidt?
I do ride my bike, yes.
Okay, because I just have one concern. We have a lot of bicyclists who are very active on, with the Transportation Board and on a separate committee, but also among members of the Transportation Board. And I'm on the Council on Aging in town, and I can tell you that some of the senior citizens feel like bicyclists are getting lots of attention and pedestrians not enough. So I'm a little concerned on the Complete Streets that people pay attention to pedestrians as well. And I noticed you were on some committee in Georgia, I think, that was a bicycle and pedestrian program.
Right. What my first internship through college was actually for the Georgia Department of Transportation's Bicycle and Pedestrian Program.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess to respond to that, I think that's a, that's a good point. I think generally, a lot of, a lot of people are really, well, how should I phrase this? I think bikes get a lot of attention because they're not very well accounted for in our transportation system. So I think there's a lot of, you know, a lot of striving for including that. But I agree that it does create some sort of conflicts, especially intersections with how you deal with people interacting at crosswalks or with returns. To answer your question, I do ride my bike, but I also, like I said, I moved here, I actually moved here specifically, of all the places within Boston, specifically in Brookline, to be at Coolidge Corner, to be at the crossroads of the 66 and the Green Line. So I can, I'm able to think, you know, big picture. I understand the conflicts, I understand how things can work together. I walk, I walk everywhere I can. I ride my bike to work when the weather's nice, not today. You know, I ride the train to work, I ride the bus to Cambridge.
Okay, you're complete.
Yeah.
He's multimodal.
I'm very multi, well, that's sort of, yeah, I was sort of thinking of how to best sort of express that sentiment, but I guess I do live a very multimodal sort of Complete Streets life personally, and so, you know, and also I have that sort of professional background and knowledge.
Thank you. Anything further? Well, we're not going to make a decision tonight. We always are very happy to see new people getting involved, fresh ideas, so thank you very much for.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Putting your name out there.
Thanks.
Todd Washburn. Same committee, same question. Tell us about yourself, Todd, and why you're interested.
Thank you. Thank you for, thanks for having me. I've had a longstanding personal interest in urban planning and urban design issues, in the concept of how you create pedestrian-friendly, vibrant communities that work for local economies, and I think help civic engagement. Unlike our previous speaker, I don't have a professional background in this area, but the longstanding personal interest means, you know, I often find myself especially attracted to news articles, blog posts, you know, on urban planning, on interesting ideas for multimodal transportation, and that sort of thing. I am also a bike commuter and a bus commuter.
I was going to say, do you take the 66, too?
Do you take the 66 bus? And again, one of my reasons for moving to Brookline now, 11 years ago, you know, I often say to people, and my wife, too, we didn't choose our dream house, we chose our dream location. And it was access to transit and walkable communities that was critical for us.
I thought it was because your, your last name is Washburn, and you're on Washburn Terrace. I thought that's why you picked your address.
That is, that's a secondary reason. That was important as well. So, yes, I know that's an amazing coincidence. So those are, those are the, those are the main reasons, I think. You know, as a bike commuter and a walker and a bus rider, you know, I'm often thinking about how all of these things fit together. I do take your point, Selectmen Daley, about bikes perhaps getting, feeling to some people like bikes get too much attention. I do feel.
I want to say, I'm not anti-bike, you know, but I, but I don't, and I have occasionally heard this from bicycle riders, that it's okay to go through red lights if they don't see any cars coming. And I can tell you, that scares some of the senior citizens.
I can tell you, as a, both a bike rider and a driver, I also have a car, I am as frustrated as you are by bicyclists who don't follow the rules. I'm also sympathetic to the idea that most of the rules were designed with cars in mind, you know, and so that's part of what I see Complete Streets being about, is finding those balances, recognizing that streets are designed for all of us, for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for cars, for freight, in Brookline, for public transportation, and as I, as I understand it, that's really what Complete Streets is about, is to making, making our streets work for everyone.
Great. Selectmen Franco.
Thank you for your application, and I note that you have a PhD in political science, so I'm going to ask you a political science question.
Yes, indeed.
The sort of most immediate challenge with this committee is actually developing a Complete Street policy.
Right.
A looming challenge is to implement it. And I wonder if you've given any thought to the best way to deliver an implementable policy, and sort of how we can get from sort of the policy we want to see implemented to actual implementation.
Right. Well, I think a couple of things. I think a vision is critical. I think that you've got to set a series of key priorities that are attainable and achievable. I think, too, that a vision can be a guide to not just the big picture, but a series of small things. You know, again, in my biking life, I notice, for instance, just when streets have been repaved in Brookline in the last decade or so, often a bike lane is added. No other changes are made to the street, just a simple bike lane is added, and it makes an enormous difference to me as both a driver and a biker. And I think, again, just laying out a vision that our streets can and should be multimodal, can and should work for everyone, can guide everything from very big decisions, which may take a lot of effort and coordination between a lot of different agencies, to very simple decisions like, hey, we're repaving the street, we're going to add a bike lane. So I really, that's, I, you know, there's a million ways to answer your question, but vision drives policy, it drives regulation, it drives statute, and all of those things are critical, I think, to making, again, to making streets work for everybody.
Thank you. Anything further for Mr. Washburn? Did you figure out, I mean, was the name, the street named after an ancestor or somebody you related to?
We have not figured it out. I'm not sure, but I have been asked that question many times. Now that my kids are getting older and I have a little more time, I'm going to research it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You'll be hearing from us. I don't see Gidi Saidi in here.
Dwayne Tindall is.
Oh, it's not on my, not on my calendar.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. All right. Dwayne Tindall for the Diversity Inclusion Community Relations Commission. Good evening, Mr. Tindall.
Good evening.
Would you introduce yourself, tell us about yourself, and why you're interested in serving on the commission?
My name is Dwayne Tindall. I've been in Brookline around 11 years. All of my children, three of them, is in Brookline schools. Well, my daughter graduated from Brookline High last year. Why I'm interested, because I have an interest in equity issues and civil rights, and I think Brookline has the potential of being really close to trying to live up to some of our ideals, so that's the reason why.
Good. Questions for Mr. Tindall? Can you tell us, what do you do for a living?
I'm, I'm the manager of education and outreach for the Fair Housing Center.
Good. Questions for Mr. Tindall. Can you tell us, what do you do for a living?
I'm the manager of education and outreach for the Fair Housing Center in greater Boston, which is basically a HUD-funded civil rights organization. So, I provide education outreach to community groups and municipalities around affirmatively furthering fair housing policies and, you know, other fair housing issues to various community groups.
Thank you. Selectman Daley?
You've mentioned in, on your application that you're particularly interested in, you know, how Brookline recruits and maybe helping the town rethink that process, which is great. But I'm surprised you didn't mention the fair housing stuff. Are you interested in, because that is one of the missions of the, that was the old and the new diversity commission, was the fair housing area. So, is that something you'd be interested in, in guiding your fellow members to do some work on, or?
Yeah, I mean, one is the law of the land. And two, I think some of the issues with, some of the discrimination is the lack of knowledge and the lack of information regarding fair housing laws and regulations. So, it's a constant reorientation relative to reminding people and teaching people about fair housing and how fair housing really made our society a better society, a more equitable society. So, yes, I would be interested to kind of move that process forward. As a matter of fact, we have quite a few trainings with various realtors in Brookline. So, and we work with the bureaucracy, the planning department around some fair housing issues and so forth. So, relative to our organization, we come in contact with Brookline often. And just if we could just kind of get that vertical integration relative to thinking about fair housing, that would be, I think, a benefit to Brookline, the town of Brookline.
Do we have a redlining problem in Brookline in your viewpoint?
We have a redlining problem in the United States.
Yeah.
And you still see a lot of staring, a lot of discrimination based on ethnicity, gender, familiar status, source of income. Some of it is based out of not knowing, others, some really bad old habits that we still have.
Yeah.
So, redlining and that level of discrimination is still, it's a regional issue, but it's also is an issue relative that we still dealing with in our country.
Do you know if there's been a test done in our community recently? I know from time to time HUD will send out...
I don't have any knowledge of any systemic tests in the Brookline area.
Yeah, I know Newton did some not too long ago, but I don't, at least from what I know of, our former Human Relations Commission, now Diversity Commission, I don't think there's been any done in Brookline, at least not unless your guys did it without sort of connecting with the local.
We haven't, I don't have any knowledge of any systemic tests on Brookline. Sometimes we conduct systemic tests, and, but not, I don't have any direct knowledge of systemic tests on Brookline.
Okay. Further questions for Mr. Tindall? No? Well, I know that you're not exactly new to town government, you're a town meeting member, but...
And he was also on the former Human Relations Commission, so he's not new to this.
Happy to see you putting your name in for this too, Dwayne.
Yeah, in fact, I would say we look forward to seeing a newly re-energized, charged human relations, actually diversity, sorry, sorry. I totally got it wrong. I apologize for that.
The spirit is the same.
Yes, yes, right, right. We'd like to see it really take on an active role and be re-energized. So, anyway.
And I believe that the next go-round with a little clearer bylaws and direction that we will be able to do that.
Yeah, good, right.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you.
Now, I'll recognize that Gidi Saidi, who appears to be in the room.
Sharon Hayes is here.
No, she's not here. I know her, I know her when I see her. So, we'll move on to Gerard Hayes, who is an applicant for reappointment to the trustees of the Womack Hill Cemetery. Mr. Hayes, good to see you.
Good day, and nice to see you, and nice to be here. I have a 50-minute talk.
No PowerPoint?
No PowerPoint, no.
Well, tell us about what you've been up to and why you want to be reappointed.
Well, the cemetery trustees is a more interesting board than you might have thought. It has an interesting history, which I've looked into. And I must say that the present company excluded you folks assembling a marvelous, outstanding board of trustees, with folks that you have appointed and will appoint. And it's just such a real pleasure to work with them. I think I bring a different linkage to segments in the community and a different interest that will complement these other folks, and I look forward to working with them as we go down, as we go down the road in the next three years, should you decide to reappoint me.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Hayes?
I just wonder if you see any particular issues that the trustees have facing them?
Well, I mean, it's always money.
Yeah, besides money. Well, including that. Sorry.
No surprise. I think it's planning for the long-term future and trying to make sure that we have provisions for folks for the long-term. And one of the things that I'm interested in looking at is what other cemeteries are doing in that area. I think sooner or later, we will run out of the current situation, and we need to make a plan. And I think that's probably the big issue facing.
Because I know some of the older sections are, I think, no longer have space. Is that right?
They're sold out.
Yeah, right. That's what I thought.
Any other questions for Mr. Hayes? I know you've been doing a good job, and we'll be making a decision on this relatively soon.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you for coming out on this rainy night. Appreciate it. Moving on, we're up to agenda item number seven, and it's the question of establishing a cable television advisory committee. Selectman Waschinsky, do you want to talk about this?
Um...
It's your baby, isn't it?
I guess so.
All right.
We're going to be renewing the Comcast license and also the RCN, just Comcast?
Yep.
So, I guess this group will help guide us in that process and work with the big folks and hopefully come up with a good renewal.
Okay.
I just had one question. As you're renaming this and naming it the Cable Television Advisory Committee, you know, I'm wondering if we're not soon about to launch beyond cable television to...
Be nice.
Yeah, something.
Well, you know, we had the prior, the prior iteration of this, and it wasn't quite exactly, but it was called the Broadband Monitoring Committee. Well, if you can think of a better word, it's fine with me. They are, I think in the law, continues to be referred to as a cable television license.
Okay.
I mean, I think the factor that subjects them to our jurisdiction is the fact that they've laid cables in our streets still. And so, I think it still is about cable, even though media is a lot more than cable right now.
Yeah. Well, and although... I just wondered if we were updating the name, if we didn't want to jump ahead.
I think both Comcast and RCN continue to be quote cable providers as opposed to fiber optic, which although I know there's some conversion going on, I don't think they've done it.
I'll also note that the composition of the committee is recommended to include our CIO, Chief Information Officer, who along with myself certainly will bring a real awareness of broadband and that whole side of things, because that's something I'm very interested in.
Okay. And I should note too that we'll be seeking two citizen appointees to this committee if it passes this difficult vote here.
I just want to make sure that one of the charges of this committee would be to monitor company compliance. Is the vision for this committee to continue to monitor compliance subsequent to the negotiation of a contract, or is this sort of a two-year effort and then it's going to lay dormant until we renew again?
I think the focus is going to be around the renewal process. But the, you know, I do believe that we should. I think that was part of the broadband monitoring committee's charge, and I think, I think that should be an ongoing responsibility, and perhaps we'll modify the charge to make that clearer.
It seems to me that we should continue to hold people accountable to what they agree to in between negotiation processes.
Yeah, I do see this as a standing committee and one that would continue to operate between the license renewal process.
Possibly even changing its name at some future date.
Okay. So, I don't think we need to read the charge here, but I'm going to move that we establish the Cable Television Advisory Committee and charge it according to the submission seven in our packet tonight. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number eight, that's our tax classification motion. And this is continuation of the hearing which happened last week. Mr. McCabe?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Gary McCabe here representing the Board of Assessors. And tonight, following up on last week's presentation regarding tax classification options for the board for the fiscal year, current fiscal year 15, where I'm available to answer any questions you may have tonight after reviewing the material. I can tell you that the prior boards of selectmen have adopted tax classification over the years in the range of a commercial factor between 1.72 and 1.75. Also, at this time, there's an opportunity to vote on the residential exemption, which I'd ask that you consider again this year so that that program could move forward. The selectmen in prior years have regularly adopted that at the maximum 20%. So, those are, you know, I think those are the highlights in front of us. Again, the importance of this vote is that our tax rates will come out of it. And I say tax rates because we'll have dual tax rates. Currently, the residential, what we call the residential tax rate is $11.39 per $1,000 of assessment, and the commercial rate is $18.50. With the change in our tax base, an increase overall in our tax base of some 10%, the tax rates will go down. Although our tax levy will increase some 3.5% to 3.7%, I think is the number. So, you know, there's a number of factors here. And, you know, your vote sort of ties it all together, what the rates will be. So, if you have any questions about the material or about, you know, what happens from here with, you know, with your vote. I did bring a form that you'll have to sign following your vote. I'll leave that with Kate.
Good. I apologize again that I wasn't here for the discussion of this last week, but I want to assure everybody I read through the book completely. So, I think I've got a pretty good grasp on where I'd like to see this headed. Selectman Franco?
There were some proposed votes in our packet this week, and I note that some of the, at the bottom of some of these votes, it says excess levy capacity, and there are different figures depending on the tax rate. I'm just wondering if you could walk us through what excess levy capacity means.
Sure. Selectman Franco, be happy to do that. The levy limit is the first thing we calculate year over year. And the tax levy limit is a formula based, or starting with the prior year's levy limit. So, we look to prior year fiscal, in this case fiscal year 14, levy limit, we had 2.5%. And then any allowable levy growth, which this year was $2.1 million. And then any debt exclusion, we currently still have a debt exclusion at $1.9 million. So, we know our new levy limit. We can calculate that. All right. Then, once we determine what tax rate we'd like to apply, we then have to test that rate. So, we test that rate back against the tax base and recalculate the levy. So, that recalculated levy, actual, call it the actual tax levy, is compared to that limit. If it's below the limit, the difference is excess levy capacity. Because you'll never get exactly to the limit. And the reason we won't is because the tax rate is expressed in dollars and cents, and nothing beyond that. So, it's, you know, it's not $18.50.65. It's $18.50. So, with that of dollars and cents rounding, you'll never get to the mathematical levy limit. Some of the choices that you have in the classification vote result in tax rates that put us over the levy limit. So, those choices are not available. And I've tried to outline those. So, you either have too much or too little. It'd be unusual to have a tax rate applied against the tax base that got you right to your levy limit. Follow-up, Selectman Franco, is we don't lose that levy, that ability to tax to that amount that carries us forward next year. Again, the levy limit is the base, not the actual levy.
But if...
For the next year.
But if, for example, we go at 1.72, the excess levy capacity that we're leaving on the table is just under $59,000 versus 1.75, where the excess is about $9,000. So, while it's not affecting our base going forward, it's, we're not funding a teacher or...
Right, in effect...
Cash that we're not getting this year.
Right, maximizing the amount of revenue.
Right, we would forego collecting those dollars.
This year, correct.
This year, right. Very small amount.
Other questions?
You know, the tax, the amount of the tax, overall tax levy compared to the excess capacity, exactly, the excess capacity is a small fraction of the levy.
Right. But in any case, I think I'm just reiterating what, excuse me, Mr. McCabe has said. We will still be reducing the rate for both the residential, I mean, assuming that we agree on the exemption, we'll continue, our options will still reduce the rate over last, or the current, well, the prior fiscal year.
Prior fiscal year.
Right.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I'm actually going to recommend that we set the residential exemption at the 20% as we historically have done. And although I hate to leave the $58,000 on the table, I'm going to recommend that we go with 1.72 because the, this year, because of the revaluation, it's the values of commercial properties have gone up significantly. And so, the tax is skewed toward them anyway. So, to go to a higher number than we have been at the last couple of years, I think would be yet another burden on the commercial. And we did hear from the Chamber of Commerce that they were okay with this number.
Mm-hmm. I'm in agreement. I have one question before we go to the vote. Can you quickly explain to me why three families are kind of an anomaly here?
That's a very good question. Why three families didn't increase in value at the rate that the community did as a whole? To put some numbers to that, year over year, the assessments of three families increased approximately 5%. So, there was an increase in the assessed value of our three-family homes. But overall, the assessed value of the community increased 10%. Any, so any group, in this case, the three families, if they're, that group's increase isn't equal to the average for the community, then taxes are shifted away from that group. All right. But why did, why was there only a 5% increase? We talked a little bit about this last week. The three-family stock, we'll say, that's left in town that hasn't been converted to condominiums, on average is 108 years old.
Mm-hmm.
All right. The, many of those are row buildings, the three families are... The, many of those are row buildings, the three families are, that are still three families, are interior, interior parcels within a, within a row. They're, it isn't that they're undesirable properties, certainly they are for many, but they're, the group that is left, so to speak, that, you know, the three families that haven't been converted are probably not as desirable as the ones that have been sold in prior years for conversion. So that, you know, that market isn't as hot as some other properties are. And, you know, that 5 percent increase reflects that.
Got it.
So, you know, there's other groups. There's, you know, sort of the, the properties that trade less frequently, like three families, average three families, you know, fell behind this market a little bit. There's a number of other factors. They tend to be on the busier streets, for example. So, you know, if you're looking at a property to purchase in Brookline, it's probably not the first property you're going to look at.
Good. Thank you, Gary.
I'd like to make a pitch for the 1.715. And yes, while the Chamber of Commerce said they're okay with 1.72, I, I don't think we should give up the $50,000. You know, we're, we're looking at a cut of $50,000 in the library budget and they're telling us that's material. So I think, I think it's material that, you know, every penny counts. And, and looking at the actual tax rates and the effects on the taxpayers, I think it's not very material. So for single families, instead of the median having a $4 increase, they'll have an $18 increase. For condos, the median will, instead of a $189, will have a $193 dollar increase. And, and, and for the commercial, it's, you know, it's within $100 for the median. So I'd like to see us try and get, go up to our levy limit.
I agree with Selectman Woschinski. We're in a climate where we're talking about making reductions or seeking efficiencies and I'm not inclined to leave money on the table, so to speak. I think we should try and collect up to the limit and, and it seems like, in this case, it's reasonable. It's not a huge difference between the burden on the single-family owner.
And just to be clear, the rate on commercial would be dropping from 1850 to 1739, which seems to me is quite a reasonable thing.
Well, I want to counterpoint that and that is, you know, it's very likely we're going to be asking people for an override here very shortly and, and that burden is going to be felt heavily by a lot of our residential owners more than our commercial owners. And I'm not, even, even a token gesture at this point of, it seems to me to be important.
I have to agree with Ken on this one. Yeah, I hate to, I hate to leave the $50,000 on the table, but I do think that, and based on some emails I saw, and I think people sort of expected me, we might stick with the 1.72 and I suspect we would have heard from a lot more homeowners if we were talking about further shifting, you know, toward homeowners paying more and businesses paying less. I don't, I just think from a sort of PR point of view, it's, it's small dollars, but when you're, when we're going to be asking for a major override, I'm, you know, when people are calculating, what is my tax cost going to be, you know, they're adding in $20 instead of $4. It's largely symbolic, but I'm with Ken on this one.
Sounds like it's going to be up to you, Selectman DeWitt. So, well, Selectman Daley made the first motion, so I think we'll take that motion and to repeat it. Selectman Daley's motion was, well, do you want to read it?
Yes, to, well, I, should I do it separately?
Yeah, let's do the residential exemption separately, please.
I hereby move that the Board of Selectmen vote to adopt a residential factor of .918516, which represents a CIP factor of 1.72 and the following corresponding tax rates, residential $10.67, commercial $17.44.
All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
No.
Selectman Woschinski?
No.
Selectman Franco?
No.
Chair votes aye. So all entertain an ultimate, alternate motion.
I'll hereby move that the Board of Selectmen vote to adopt the residential factor, .919082, which represents a CIP factor of 1.715 and the following corresponding tax rates, residential 1068, commercial 1739.
So we have the motion. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then we also need a motion for Selectman Daley. Why don't you do that one first?
Yeah, then I move that we set the residential exemption at 20 percent for fiscal year 2015.
Any discussion or counter motions on that? All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Goldstein.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. Appreciate your, this report is very dense and difficult, but it's readable and understandable in the, in the long run. Well, thank you. And we're available going forward to try to answer any questions that you or taxpayers may have about these new tax rates.
I do have one question. I mean, it's really sort of an implementation, excuse me. Since we are more and more encouraging people to go to the website, will you be able to publish the vote of the Board of Selectmen and one of your charts that measures the impact and put it up on the web?
Yes. Yes, we will.
That would be very good.
Tomorrow.
Good. Fantastic. Great.
Be happy to do that. Selectman DeWitt? I also want to tell you that, that your vote will be submitted to the Department of Revenue along with the rest of the tax rate recapitulation.
Right.
Forms that shows we have a balanced budget, we have adequate reserves and that sort of thing. So the rate won't actually be approved for probably, you know, a week or so.
Okay. Well, maybe you should, I don't know, you could publish it as the vote of the Board of Selectmen and then confirm whether or not DOR has approved.
You know, pending approval.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Thank you. We're five minutes early, but it's not a public hearing, so I think we can start our discussion of implications of a no-override scenario as part of our overall discussion of the override study committee report. And Mr. Kleckner will start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we are engaging in a, in a series, in a long series of conversations we've had about the override study committee report and its recommendations as a process to get to a decision by this board next month, which would determine the amount, the form of the question of an override and a debt exclusion. And so, one of the questions that the board obviously wants to understand is, what would happen if this override did not pass? Now, we have stated the purposes of this override, which are generally a school-related override, but the question of what would happen if it doesn't pass is somewhat of a different question and we want to address that this evening. So, one of the things I'd like, I'd like to do is just to review with you some of our basic assumptions about the override and the expenditures that would be covered by the override. And we continually look at this chart that, or this table that's in front of you, which represents what we see as the three-year, we're looking at this as a, essentially a three-year plan where we would say that the, guarantee that the override would cover us for at least these three years. And so there's a couple of assumptions that, that go into this and these have been worked on throughout the fall. And as you recall, we have updated these numbers somewhat. There's two things I want to mention about these numbers. First of all, the town has modified the school-town partnership formula again. The idea, I think, going into the override was that all of the enrollment credit, if you will, would be borne by the school department in the override, but in an effort to bring the override number down, we have again committed to give the school department credit for 50 percent of the projected enrollment cost. And that results in a lower, generally, override. Now, there's some numbers that have gone up as well. You remember the 1 percent versus 2 percent collective bargaining approach and that has changed. But essentially, we're looking here at $12.33 million over three years that would incorporate as well the non-tax revenue and municipal expenditures that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. One more point I want to make about these numbers is we believe that it is appropriate to move the leases that we are currently engaged in to offload some of our, our classroom capacity. Primarily, it's the, the early education program, the BEET program. We are renting a number of facilities in town and those costs are current, were, I think, expected to be part of the override as well. We think it's better to move those over to the, to the capital plan and there will be some impact on the debt exclusion, but we think it's more appropriate and that bring, has brought the number down somewhat as well. So really, the components of the, of the override, let me go back one slide and tell you, the, the components of this override are structural deficit, enrollment, which includes to some extent program catch-up, enhancement of programs and information technology. Those are the components of the override. By doing the things that we've talked about in the early part of the school-town partnership formula and making the change on the leases, as I mentioned, what we've essentially done is we've eliminated the structural deficit for the schools, at least in the first year. And, and so really what we're talking about is an override that would fund the impacts of enrollment, some of the enhancement in the, in the school program and a fairly robust informational technology upgrade. Now, you could say, I suppose, that that would, that's all on the schools and, you know, most of it is, but we felt that it was important for, if the override failed, that there is a certain element that has to happen, we feel, with the, that regardless of the override, we have to get the old Lincoln School up and ready to go, we need to do a number of other things. And we are, I am proposing that the town share the cost of that if the override fails. And I'm going to get to that in just a moment. So, as I said, all of this, the base budget growth, which we refer to as a structural deficit, has now gone away and our override is that, that much less as a, as a result of that. So there is no school, there is no structural deficit, but there is, of course, costs about, you know, the enrollment. So if you include without a catch-up, enhancements or info-technology, we've determined that that number is about $1.36 million. That's the cost of enrollment and the old Lincoln School to, no matter what happens, we really, we feel we really have to do that. And as a result of that, we felt that, or I felt that it was important and reasonable that the town would absorb 50 percent of those costs, which result in about $680,000. If this board feels that that's not a good approach, you know, we would want to hear that tonight. That's a major policy decision, I think, would have to go forward. To do any more than that, I do think, then you're starting to really confuse the voters, I think, or create a notion that, you know, you're saying it's a school override, but if the override doesn't pass, then it's really, you know, the, the impacts will be more on the municipal side or, or more, you know, less on the school side. And I don't think that's the kind of message you want to send to the voters, that, you know, we're asking you for an important override, but if it doesn't pass, well, you know, don't worry, there'll be other things cut. That's really, I think, a very important policy decision that you need to make and we felt comfortable with that, sharing that $1.36 million amount. Now, the superintendent will get up shortly and talk about the impacts on the school system and they're substantial, but I would, I want to tell you some of the impacts that I think would result from this sharing $680,000 of the, from the town budget. And you'll see these charts. The one on the left represents the departments, the largest departments, and you see those, that's no surprise to you. And I think the chart on the, on the right probably is no surprise. Those are the functional areas when all, all the expenses are considered and almost three-quarters of them are personnel. So it's, it doesn't really, it'd take a genius to figure out that, you know, if we're going to have to cut, it's going to be in some of those larger areas. And in fact, that's what I have done. I want to say that these are very, these are very preliminary. We really have, I have not really gotten involved in the budget process quite yet. Sean and Melissa and the department heads are, have been very busy at the budget, but it hasn't come to my level yet. So we haven't gone through the kind of scrutiny that we normally would do when we're making recommendations like this. And so when I show you these numbers and these, these reductions, I want to say that they're certainly representative of what we would have to do, but they're not exactly what I might do. And frankly, I'm looking for some feedback and I've told you this before, this is kind of a, a process where we give you some information, we get some policy direction, we come back with more information and so on. And this will obviously have to conclude by next month. But these are what I consider to be reasonable and recommendations and representative, the kind of recommendations that I would have to make to reduce $680,000 from the, the town's budget. But I will say that, open to suggestions from this board and I'll also be engaging with the department heads and other stakeholders in order to finalize these, these numbers. So before we move on to the superintendent, be happy to take some questions.
Yeah, I have a, this is really sort of a process question, I guess. And I understand the complexity and I know you understand the complexity, but we'll have to, one, put an override question on the ballot. We're hoping to do it in January. We anticipate putting a question on the ballot in January. And the same time, you and our colleagues in the school department are creating their budgets for the next fiscal year. When you publish the financial plan, do you have the intention or the thought that you will, well, first of all, your budget has to be no override, right? Because it hasn't been passed.
Yeah, but we're going to do both.
Okay. So there'll be a zero override budget. Would you then include in the financial plan whatever components of override are decided to be on the ballot? In other words, that would drive the other one or two scenarios that you would also include?
That's what we did.
Yeah, I know.
When you say one or two scenarios, you're not about the question.
Well, I don't know if the, if the override question will be a single question for operating. It could be a tiered question if it's a pyramid. Would you create a financial plan reflecting each of those potential funding?
I would.
Amounts?
I would.
Revenue amounts?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First, when you mentioned altering the town-school partnership formula, I'm presuming you meant that you're deviating from the formula.
Yes, the 50/50.
This year.
Well, we've actually, in the past, we have actually, in the last few years, gave credit for that enrollment growth. We were not planning on doing that this year, but we, we are proposing to do that again.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure we haven't thrown out the framework of the town-school partnership agreement without a wider discussion on that issue.
No.
Okay. But then my next question.
I think we talked about it, the school-town partnership meeting a couple of weeks ago as well.
Okay.
Do that.
But I think the entire board, you know, if you're really trying to alter that formula on a permanent basis, I think the entire board should be, if not a financial planning committee, take a look at that before we go forward with something like that on a permanent basis. That's all I want to say. I want to get to some of I want to get to some of the specific cuts you're proposing. I mean, again, I see the library book budget on here for $50,000. Have you talked with the library? Because they obviously had strong objections to their book budget being cut, and maybe they'd rather cut a part-time person or something like that. So I'm a little surprised to see the book budget one on here again. And I also want to, the mental health program, that reduction seems way out of proportion compared to all the others, and can you explain that and what's going on there?
Well, I can tell you that none of those reductions is department support, none of them. And so, you know, I'm not going to be getting any bonus points for popularity by proposing reductions. I will engage with all the departments. I let them know about this beforehand. I did indicate that I felt it was representative. Some of those are recommendations of the override study committee, but that's still my decision, and so I'm still working on it, to be honest with you. I'm also aware of the library's protection under the certification process that they talked about last week, so that could present a challenge, too. With respect to the mental health, it's a big cut. It's a program that the town has contracted for in the past. I think you'll hear from Dr. Balsam and others that don't support it. If you could tell me some of the ones, I'd be happy to consider that.
Well, I mean, that's the one I want to talk about. You're entirely, that's not paring around the edges, it looks like, from the numbers. So what exactly is it you're proposing there with that number that you're going to?
That would eliminate the contractual service with the center.
And that they provide services in the schools, is that?
This contract, Alan, maybe you could, why don't you come on?
Is this time for us to ask for an explanation from the actual folks who are out there?
Let's do that. Let's sidetrack here for a minute. I know we have members of the Brookline Mental Health here. So, Alan, and come on forward.
Ms. Price.
Ms. Price, thank you.
Dr. Price.
Alan Balsam, Public Health and Human Services. Thanks for the opportunity to chat with you tonight. If you don't mind, I'd like to make a statement, and then Cindy will address the specific implications of proposed cuts, if that's okay.
That'd be great.
So I've drafted a statement that I hope you have. If you don't, I have copies for you. Have you seen it? If not, maybe Cindy, you could just pass this to them. By the way, I don't envy anybody who has to come up with these cuts. This is torture. But having said that, one of the core functions of any public health department is assessment of need in the community. Toward that end, the Brookline Department of Public Health has released 16 volumes of Healthy Brookline over the past 18 years, each of which seeks to shine a light on the health status and needs of a sector of our population, or on a particular set of disease conditions impacting Brookline. Several of the most recent volumes have focused on young people and older adults. For example, Healthy Brookline Volume 12, done in collaboration with the Council on Aging, examined the health status and needs of older adults over 85. Volumes 14 and 15 reported on the town's youth behavior risk survey. In addition, the Community Health Network Area, CHNA 18, of which Brookline is a member, conducted a health needs assessment in 2013 and examined Brookline in addition to other communities within the group. What is striking about all of these assessments is the identification of mental health as the first or second most important health challenge among the populations studied, and the conclusion that Brookline needs to continue and expand mental health services here. That mental health has been the stepchild of health services is well-recognized. Though parity is supposed to exist between mental and non-mental health services, this is clearly not the case. I hope that the appointment of Mary Lou Sutter, a friend and longtime advocate for mental health, as the new state Health and Human Services chief, will signal an increased recognition of the need for adequate funding for mental health services. In the meantime, those of us who value public health and the health of our community must stand firm in opposition to cuts for mental health services in Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Price.
Thank you. If you will allow, Mr. Chairman, I would like to have Peter Norstrand, our board president, say one minute of remarks to you, and then I will follow up. Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Peter Norstrand, and last September I was elected president of the board of the Brookline Community Mental Health Center, succeeding Robin Atlas, who had served for more than eight years. I'm also the treasurer of the Brookline Teen Center, and for many years, served on EDAB for the town, and as some of you may know, my wife is also the executive director of Coolidge Corner Theater, so my family is deeply invested in this town. And it pains me that the first public act that I have to do is to come before this board and plead not to eliminate a mental health program that has been funded by the town for more than 50 years. And it's particularly painful because we are within a few days of the second anniversary of the Sandy Hook shootings in Newtown, Connecticut, which were perpetrated by an individual who was untreated for mental illness. And the programs that we run at the center are designed, designed to prevent that horror by identifying crisis situations before they get out of hand. And when I look at the cuts, as Sleckman has noted, they appear to be out of whack. We're bearing 25% of the cost, and no other town agency is being asked to take that kind of a share in the cutting. I know that budget cutting is not easy. It's not easy at all, but we do ask for fairness in this situation. And let me turn it over to Cindy to talk more about the programs.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you. So you had asked, what does the town contract fund? And let me respond to that question. So for the $170,000 that the town contract would provide to the center, the funds go to secure access to care for Brookline residents who are in crisis or who need service at home or in the community because they can't make it to the center, or to provide consultation to town agencies and other department staff to help assure individual and community safety and well-being. Specifically, the contract supports three community social workers who provide a variety of clinical services to low and moderate-income residents, services not covered by third-party health insurances. So here's some brief examples of the kinds of services that the center provides for the funding that you give them, give us. The center is called and responds when there's an emergency in the community, a sudden death of a parent of a Brookline student, potentially violent situation that the police contact us to help with, a person who is about to be evicted and has no housing, a resident that a health inspector has found to be a serious hoarder and whose apartment poses a fire hazard, a seriously mentally ill adult who has stopped taking medication and poses some danger to himself, herself, or others, a child who won't attend school or has been suspended from school due to emotional illness, a neighbor who calls about a parent who's unable to care for their children. When there's a fire on Beacon Street, we're out there. All of these are real incidences in which the center is called upon daily to respond and to find resolution and to offer healing. Our community social workers meet with and offer outreach, trauma care, and other services to over 300 Brookline residents in need annually. There is no other source of funding for this type of crisis care. Perhaps there was an assumption that health insurance could be billed for this care. It cannot. Health insurance provides coverage for 50 minutes of care at a time, usually in an office setting. Most private mental health practitioners, of which there are many in Brookline, are no longer taking health insurance because the reimbursement is so poor. It covers 50 to 70% of the cost of care. The center bills insurance where it can, but the insurance does not cover emergency or outreach services, and no one else does. This is what the town loses when it eliminates this contract, and if it does eliminate this contract, then it is likely that overloaded town police, school, health, and social service staff will be asked to pick up the pieces as best they can, and that will be a cost to the town. As far as I know, there was no discussion with the center about the elimination of this funding in this contract and what it would mean for the town. There was certainly no discussion with the override committee who first proposed this cut about what would be lost. And as far as I know, no one from the town has contacted us when this cut was transferred to the elimination list. I hope that this is not yet another example of stigmatization of mental health and the people who suffer from emotional illnesses. 75% of the center's clients are low and moderate income, and that is a significant and growing population in the town. You turn on the TV, you see the impact of what happens when access to mental health care is not available. There are highly effective treatments for mental illness. It is untreated mental illness that poses a danger to our community. You may also be aware, or not aware, that for the $170,000 the town provides the center, the center interns, bills, insurances, enters into local, state, and federal contracts, and raises funds philanthropically to support the care of Brookline residents and to keep the community safe. For every dollar provided through the contract, the center raises $35, and that's a leveraging deal that you'll be hard-pressed to beat by other departments and other agencies. We want to work with you, the town administrators and others, to really make sure that these services are preserved for the town. I think there are many in our town who positively value mental health services and access to that care, so I look forward to having a conversation about that. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any questions for representatives of Brookline Mental Health before we let them sit down? No? Okay. I'll just want to state, to keep it in context, we're talking about no-override scenario, and we're talking about some placeholders right now of the kinds of things, and I don't want you to go away thinking that this is a done deal or a foregone conclusion. We're very far from the point where that kind of cut would have to be made, so.
Well, I appreciate that, yes, I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak on behalf of those services, and I sincerely look forward to working with you to modify this list, because I do think it does put the emphasis on elimination of mental health care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment, and my comment is that I am very disappointed, and I'm going to be careful not to use the words "I feel," that there was no conversation about this 50-year-long relationship, which is absolutely providing to our most vulnerable people. And the fact that it was put on a hit list along with cars strikes me as indefensible.
Sleckman Daily?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Klechner. Are you including, are you assuming that even if an override doesn't pass, that we would do some of the revenue enhancement measures that have been discussed, like potentially raising the trash fee or raising parking meter fees? Is any of that included in these?
If an override does not pass?
If an override does not pass, that we would go ahead with some of those?
I haven't made that recommendation yet.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Well, I assume we're pretty desperately would be scrambling for money, but.
It's an awkward situation, you know, you're posing a question to the voters, and, you know, you've got to be careful, I think, when you say to the voters, "We want to raise your taxes, and if you don't approve that, we're going to, you know, we're just going to raise other fees as well." So I just think we have to be very careful, and I think Sleckman-Golstein's comments are correct. I mean, I'm not looking to try to create any stigma or anything, but, you know, the fact of the matter is if we have to cut $680,000, there are going to be some difficult things. You know, we have a reduction of personnel on this, and if it's not some of these, it's going to be other very important things. And so, you know, if we have to cut $680,000 of the town budget, there's going to be some pain felt, no matter what. I certainly will, this was intended to be.
No, I appreciate that, but I just want to say that I think, from our point of view, I have the greatest respect for the override study committee, but on many of the specifics, the things they wanted to eliminate, I didn't agree with them when I read the report, and I still don't agree with them now. And I think this is, I mean, I think there's a couple, a number of items here, and this one in particular, where, you know, there would have to be some discussion with them, and, you know, perhaps some reduction they could handle, but to sort of eliminate the whole problem, program, I think you're hearing from several of us, is not something we would like to see happen, and I think that we're going to have to look very, unfortunately, should an override not pass, I think we are going to have to look very seriously at anything we can do to raise revenue, but also look more broadly, perhaps, for where we eke these cuts out.
Sleckman Daily, can I take from your comment, though, that you support the notion that the town is responsible for at least half of the enrollment growth in old Lincoln School cost, that $680,000 is our responsibility?
Well, I have always, you know, been a believer that the schools are part of the town, and, you know, many, many people, as I did many years ago, moved here to Brookline because of schools, and we still want the police to come and the ambulance to come and mental health services, et cetera, but I don't think that, I think we would have to try to work with the schools to a certain extent. So, yes, the basic, I'm not opposed to the basic premise. I am opposed to some of the specifics.
Good, and I agree with you on that. I accept the notion that that $680,000 is the minimum that the town side would be expected to do in a no-override situation, which I hope is not what any of us are dealing with. Sleckman, Frank?
I just want to ask how preliminary a list this is. I take from your comments that this is sort of your general thinking, nothing is set in stone. We heard last week from the library that a reduction of $50,000 could put as much as $134,000 in state funding at risk. I'm wondering if there's been a similar analysis of the downstream impact on other funding sources that have come from these cuts?
No, I want to read from my memo. I have identified a plan, well, excuse me, the following expenditure reductions have been identified as possible recommendations for municipal reductions. Please understand that this is a very preliminary list that has been developed without the benefit of the complete budget process, and while these reductions are very representative of the types of cuts required, I respectfully reserve my right to identify alternatives. So that's.
And I'm going to underline that this, the origin of this notion was the override study committee, just to be absolutely clear, it was one of their recommendations. I happen to disagree with it strongly, but it was an override study committee recommendation.
Sleckman, Woszynski?
I agree it's going to be painful to start identifying cuts, but I think it's going to be imperative that when we identify the cuts, that people perceive them as fair. So if I were doing this, I perhaps would try to be more broad in my cut list and perhaps have a smaller group of cuts over a broader period and spread the pain, and not have an important program like the mental health program take the entire hit, or, you know, disproportionate share of the hit. So that would be my suggestion.
So I feel I have to get some of these things out to get in your direction. Right, right.
Right, right.
And we keep going from there. It is a very awkward process.
Yeah, I got it. It's an iterative process.
This is a process that, we haven't even started essentially the budget process. I mean, we started it in the early process, but it hasn't concluded by any means, and so I'll need some more time, but I certainly appreciate your input as well as that of Dr. Balsam and Dr. Price and others.
But I'll end by saying that, you know, every dollar the government spends has a constituency, and by spreading, by spreading the pain, we're going to be hurting more constituencies, and that's why I think it's especially important that we be perceived as fair in spreading the pain. And I just hope we don't have to experience this, that we can put together a package that will win the support of the voters, and that's the important thing here.
But certainly, I think that we would be considering revenue enhancement measures at the same time we were looking at cuts, so to try to...
That would be my suggestion.
To try to reduce some of these numbers.
Just to state the obvious, and this is something that was included in the override study committee report, I think the strong reaction that you've heard from this board tonight, some of these potential, and I underscore the word "potential" cuts, demonstrates that there is not a lot of fat in the budget. There is no fat in the budget, and everything that we are looking at is valuable, and this town is run efficiently.
So, we interrupted you at one point, Mr. Kleckner, but I think you might have been at the end...
I think I was going to quickly turn it over to the superintendent.
Maybe that's what you'd like to do right now.
So with that out, I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, I think, Mr. Kleckner.
Well done.
So, thanks for having us back. A couple things, I'm going to start out by expressing my appreciation to Mr. Kleckner, Mr. Cronin, for the continued work that we do together around the town-school partnership. And I want to take you through some pieces of the rest of the story here. So this is where we started, where Mr. Kleckner started, and I want to say a word about a couple of these areas that he talked about that are not part of enrollment. So, right, enrollment is part, enrollment is part of the calculation of the town-school partnership. But historically, that is a very limited definition of the term. The definition of enrollment in the town-school partnership is teacher in a classroom. We expand by X number of sections, five, let's say. It's five teachers split between the town and schools. It does not, as that, as that enrollment continues to grow, it does not take into account, in a large school, the literacy specialists, the math specialists, the nurses, the guidance counselors, the social workers, the assistant principals that come with running that school. So it's an exceptionally narrow, but well-appreciated definition of the term. Most of what I just talked about is included in that catch-up line around guidance counselors and those other areas. Okay? So let me stick with this basic premise here to start, that when we break out those areas and take a look at those areas over the three years, catch up again, including those, number of those areas I talked about, enhancements being work that we're doing in particular initiatives, like the literacy project, information technology being that technology plan. And again, the elements in those first areas, in particular the first one, program catch-up, are all enrollment growth associated, and in fact, most of those enhancements are enrollment growth associated. They just don't meet the conditions of that very narrow definition of enrollment. So, Mr. Kleckner started out here by saying, you know, if you factor in an enrollment component, if you factor in the opening, the Old Lincoln School, you're at about a $1.3 million shortfall. So what we did here was we took the three years of program catch-up enhancement and information technology, and this is where maybe we part a little bit in terms of our analysis of this. There are some of those things that we need to do in a no-override scenario, and we'll need to consider, as we discuss the budget with the school committee, and need to make recommendations on, as we consider the no-override scenario budget. So just for discussion tonight, we took those and modified them. No scientific approach here at all to the numbers that you see to the left there. The program catch-up of about $1.1 million, enhancement of points of $700,000, and information technology of about $550,000. That's another 2.4, and that quickly turns the $600,000 shortfall that Mr. Kleckner talked about in our budget to a $3 million shortfall. Now, obviously, that's not where we would end up in a no-override scenario, but it's to illustrate that there is some point. And I can't tell you, because we haven't discussed it in any, in any length, at any length with the school committee yet, what that number is. I mean, is it merely taking the catch-up numbers and factoring some portion of those in? So what is it at the end of, what does the $680,000 become when we actually look at the budget for that FY '16 no-override? Is it a $2.4 million shortfall, or 1.2, or is it around the $680,000? I can tell you it's more than that. So that would mean additional reductions then to the base budget. And again, as far as we're able to go with this tonight is where we were the last time, right? Because we haven't even started this budget process yet, this particular budget process. So, again, what I'll lay out for, just for example purposes, is just what some programs cost, right? I'm not saying they would be on the list. I'm not saying they're at the top of some list. I am saying that a number of them were in the 65 percent scenario that we showed you some number of weeks ago. But if you factor down, let's take the scenario that says 1.2. So what that means is the $680,000, the piece that Mr. Kleckner walked you through, and adding, let's say, $600,000 from the catch-up list. Now we're at 1.2, 1.3. So we now have 1.3 to reduce, if that's what, if that's what the no-override budget is going to look like. These are the areas, and because now I'm not cutting things from enhancement, that's gone. Didn't happen. I'm not cutting from technology because it didn't happen. So now I'm to core service, to core services, I'm to core programs. I'm looking at high school staffing and potentially the four-plus-one, the tutorial program. I'm looking at things like the elementary world language program. I'm looking at areas like steps to success. I'm looking at areas like our enrichment and challenge support, and we can make a list, and we'll need to, obviously, to create this particular scenario for approval as one of our budgets for the school committee to consider when they see the superintendent's message in early February. So just to give you...
You would have heard my question to Mr. Kleckner, so I guess my question to you is equally. When you propose your superintendent's recommended budget, are you proposing to lay out the no-override, the other possible...
Yes.
Okay.
We'll do, we'll do at least, at least a budget around a no-override scenario, and whatever question or questions you include...
I'm assuming whatever goes on the ballot would be the basis for alternatives.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
So whether that's, you know, one question, that leads us to do at least two budgets. Is it, is it some kind of tiered pyramid question? That may lead to three or more budgets that we would have to...
Okay.
...put out for people to look at.
Superintendent Lupini, are you finished?
I am.
Okay. Have you taken any questions?
Yeah. It seems to me that what, I'm thinking of, you know, what are we going to need to help us make a decision on the structure of the ballot questions? And in my mind, I'm thinking, at the very least, a chart which has things like these programs as a row, and then in your columns, you have no-override, we've been talking a 65 percent number, a 90 percent number, and anything else you might want to propose to us. And from there, we and the voters can see on a page the progression of how, you know, what are they buying by voting for these different scenarios? And that'll help us make a decision, and I would think would also help the school committee make a decision on, because what, yeah?
So it's in process.
Okay.
Exactly what you talked about is in process. I mean, I guess I would throw out that the one sort of disclaimer is that it's not our budget, right? It doesn't represent what the school committee has approved as the budget. It merely represents where we are now and the kinds of things...
Right, and we have the same issue on the taxes.
Right, exactly, you do.
We did, sorry, put Mr. Kleckner on the spot on this one, too, in the same way, I mean.
Yes. So, yes, in as much as we can...
Right, right. And then, you know, recognizing that there's still more process that's going to occur afterwards, but, you know, we have, we have to have some basis to make some decisions.
Absolutely, yes. And that, as I said, that's in, that's in process for all of you and for the school committee.
Right, good.
Are we going to see a chart that shows what no-override does to class sizes, for
So, in as much as, so the struggle with the question is, there are some assumptions in the question about, in answering it, about what steps might be taken with respect to policies that would influence that. I mean, short of that, what you would see is a change in the ranges. You'd see spiking, in other words, because the only way, the main way, let me see, not the only way, the main avenue we have for impacting class size now is a consolidation. Right?
Right.
Is a consolidate, and a consolidation, whether it's in kindergarten, as kids enter and we say, "Well, we're only going to run this many sections, not the 31 that we're running now," or whether it occurs in a fourth grade that currently exists, and we say, "Well, it looks like the number is low enough that we can run three sections instead of four." Many of those cases, if you look at our present enrollments, are where you see some 26s or 25s, because we've done a consolidation there, and we've driven that number up to the 25. So you would see, you would see, your range would broaden. You would still see class sizes, I think, in any circumstance, at the, at some of the numbers that we have now, and you would see some that would be larger. But, but as I've said for some number of years now, the only way to impact that further, given particularly the steps that we've already taken with respect to delaying assignments, all those things I went through with you a number of weeks ago, the steps that we've taken to make sure we're assigning as efficiently as possible, right? Delaying till later and all those kinds of things, would be to be able to widen buffer zones or sign outside of attendance areas, and I don't anticipate that happening.
So, my question was, for example, class sizes, and that's what I, you know, outside the example of class sizes, it would be policy decisions. Are we going to see a breakdown that's not just a matter of FTEs, but a breakdown that says what are some of the policy changes that would be forced upon you with no-override?
So we can cer, we can certainly give you areas where there are policies, goodness knows there's been enough discussion of them the last two years. We could certainly give you areas where there are policies that if certain decisions were made relative to those, to those areas, they, they could have impact. It's for others, the school, starting with the school committee, because it's their policy book, to determine...
We're down to the uncomfortable conversations.
Understood.
You heard Mr. Kleckner a minute ago, you know, having to say something very difficult about Brookline Mental Health. I think we're at the point in this conversation on the school side, too, where we have to talk about those different subjects.
Respectfully, I would say that these are difficult conversations, right? We've been through some of these before. Come to those public hearings. Those are difficult conversations, right? Every one of those programs has a constituency. Some of them were created through overrides.
Nothing easy about those.
Right, so, so, yeah, some of those exist already, but some of them, you know, I mean, there are, there are policy decisions about student assignment, about students who attend here, those kinds of things, that I'm sure in that kind of situation, we'll have to discuss with the school committee, and yes, we can identify what they are.
Thank you. Selkman Daley?
Yeah, well, I have two things. One, I am, I want to offer my opinion. I'm distressed to see the steps to success program on there, and that looks to me like the total elimination of the program.
Again, I'm going to say what Mr. Kleckner said earlier, right? These are up here to give you, and this is what we do when we discuss them with the school committee, that's to give you the total cost of the program. That's not a recommendation.
Okay.
Right?
Well, I mean, I just...
Examples, examples, so that you, so that you can put a cost, right, around a comparison to a total cut that would be necessary. School committee members find it helpful to look at what it costs to run program X compared to the total amount that they're being cut, they're being asked to cut, right? And that's, that's all we're trying to illustrate tonight. Those aren't recommendations. Those aren't even our options. They're merely comparison points.
Okay. All right. Because I do think that program, I mean, I think we heard last week something about, you know, there's long been that achievement gap between the children of color and not...
Yeah, you heard that, yes.
And you were saying that that had been shrinking for a while and then wasn't really shrinking lately, and I think steps to success is a key portion in addressing that. So I would, I would hate to see that one take the whole, the whole brunt of it. But my question to you is, because I'm a little perplexed by these numbers, and you're talking about an additional reduction in $600,000, so is that like assuming that this board didn't go along with giving you more than you might be strictly entitled to under the town-school partnership? Is that where you're getting that $600,000 number, or what is that number from?
No, no. So what I'm saying is, and said, stated earlier, that in the scenario that Mr. Kleckner laid out, the school department gets at least 50 percent of the $1.3 million shortfall from the town, in what he laid out earlier. What I'm suggesting is that that formula takes only the traditional elements of the town-school partnership, which includes a very narrow definition of enrollment into account. Okay? So we start out this discussion, as does the town, with a $680,000 shortfall. Okay? What I'm suggesting is even if you look at pieces of the catch-up number, which I would argue is enrollment, but has not traditionally been part of the definition, right? But clearly, we would agree that guidance counselors and nurses and vice principals and literacy specialists and math specialists are increased by enrollment. We would, I think we would all agree to that. They're in that catch-up number. Okay? So there's some number, at the very least in there, even if I set technology and enhancement aside, there's some number in that catch-up number that we might add. And what I said is, let's just suggest, so that we can have a discussion, adding $600,000 to it.
Okay.
Now the shortfall is not, is not $680,000, it's 1.2 to 1.3. So there's some number that we start out with that we haven't yet determined, because we haven't gone deep enough into that to say, "Look, what is it that we need to do in that catch-up number no matter what? No matter what happens here?" Because as I've said to you every time I've stood here over the last few months, right? We've delayed a number of those catch-up areas long enough. We can't sustain them in schools of seven, eight, 900 students with some of the guidance staffing, the nursing staffing, the literacy staffing, the math staffing that we have now. So there's some steps we'd have to take in at least that area. That's what I'm saying. I hope that helps.
All right.
I think it's also important to remember that...
I think it's also important to, to remember that the bulk of the technology plan and program enhancements would not happen if this override didn't pass. And what Bill's talking about is, what are the, what are the very key parts of those that we'd have to do, whether it's 600 or whatever? But I don't wanna lose the, the thought that technology plan and enhancement, program enhancement in the schools would not occur if this override did not pass.
I have an opinion similar to Selectman Daly's, and I guess I'm gonna say what I see on this list is program cuts, but I also see Steps to Success as being the only one on that list that singles out low income and minorities for reduction. And frankly, I think you could do with fewer generic support staff that you do not currently have before you would cut a program like that. And I hope you would be willing to say that, too.
I'll try again. I've given you examples of program costs.
And there are.
I probably should've given you 10 more, right?
Probably should've.
Right.
Probably should've.
That's fair.
Because this one singles out very calculatedly, it seems to me.
I would, I would.
In ways that are not very, let's put it this way, defensible from my perspective.
So, I'm sorry you feel that way. That's not why it's here.
That's okay, that's my opinion.
So you heard Selakman Waschinsky ask for a chart that spells out some more program costs? And you said that that information was being developed, it was forthcoming. Can you give us a sense of when we might receive it? Is it gonna be in early January? Is it close to completion? So we could have it next week?
Before the break? Before the break.
Okay. Anything further?
Thanks very much.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for everyone listening. We're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is license renewals.
Whoops.
If anybody's leaving the room, will they do so expeditiously so that we could continue? So I'm gonna turn this portion of the meeting over to Selectman Daly, in as much as I need to recuse myself on some of the licenses, and it's a lot easier for me to do it if I'm not actually running the meeting at that moment, so.
Okay.
Selectman Daly?
Okay. Well, we have a number of, I will note that we did get a memo that Clearflower Bakery has not been applying for a food vendor license and probably.
Excuse me, folks, if you could keep it down so we can hear each other. Thank you.
Speaking as one of their frequent customers, I know they do so a lot to the public. So I assume, Mr. Kleckner, that Pat Maloney is recommending that they be sort of notified of this. I assume somebody's doing that?
Yes, and we're gonna get an application from them and bring it to you next week.
Okay, great. So let's go on to coin-operated amusement devices. They, the, we have several, Brookline Lodge of Elks and Coolidge Corner Clubhouse, and the police and fire departments have inspected all locations, listed, and recommend renewal for 2015. So does anybody have any questions or wanna discuss any of these locations?
No.
I'm gonna move favorable action then on the coin oper, the renewing the licenses for 2015 on the coin-operated amusement licenses as listed in on this sheet. All in favor? Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. This is hard getting this. I'm not sure what she's supposed to do either. Yeah, okay. All right.
I'll even mention, I didn't give her advance warning.
Okay, so let's move on to the common victular, and we'll probably have a few more questions on these.
Can I state before we begin that I'm gonna recuse myself in the following matters? In fact, I will recuse myself for CV license, entertainment, and to the extent applicable liquor license for 1632 Beacon Street Cafe Nicholas, 1648 Beacon Street Public House, 14 Green Street Osaka, 278 Harvard Street Paris Crapery, 387 Washington Street Village Fair Pizza, and 714 Washington Street, Washington Square Tavern, due to a business relationship.
Okay. Did you get that, Kate?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not gonna read through all the common victular. We have a, an extensive list of it, 38 pages of them. The police and building and fire departments have inspected all locations, listed and recommend renewal for 2015. The health department recommends approval of all food vendor license renewals for 2015, subject to final inspection and in complete, including compliance with our polystyrene and plastic bag ban, which went into effect December 1st, 2014. The following common victulars have been approved for renewal but have not filed the appropriate renewal paperwork. 1632 Beacon Street, isn't that one of the ones you just listed, Selectman?
Uh.
Yeah.
You did.
Yeah, okay. Four Brookline Place.
No, that's a.
1026 Commonwealth Avenue. The first one was Cafe Nicholas, the second is New England Soup Factory, the third was Quan's Kitchen, and the last is 75 Harvard Street, the Brookline Spa.
I hope they all get their renewals.
Well, and, and then there's another list, Selectman Daly, you may get to it eventually, but under the fire inspections, they actually list two more, I think, that are closed, that were not on.
That's number six of this memo.
Yeah, right.
Number five also.
Yeah.
Actually, I think I'll add to my recusal that, to the extent we're not moving for a common victular's license or renewal of liquor license for 1032 Beacon Street Mission Cantina, I think it's Cantina.
Cantina.
I recuse myself on that matter as well, due to a business relationship.
Okay. Well, the, the ones I just read off, it's recommended that these licenses be approved subject to the filing of the appropriate paperwork and fees, including a $50 late fee.
Okay. And I just wanted to be sure that we had all of the, the total list is all of the same named entities.
Okay.
Which I found a little bit confusing. That's my issue.
Well, the following common victulars are closed for business, have not filed for renewal. That's Mission Cantina at 1032 Beacon Street, the Metropolitan Club, 1204 Boylston Street, and Zen at 320 Washington Street.
But the chief fire chief says Olaya Cafe is also closed.
Yeah, well, the, the next one says the following common victulars are closed at this time but have filed for renewal. And that, that's where I think we have the questions, maybe. Olaya Cafe.
Oh, Olaya, I see, transferring in January. Okay, all right. Fine. The other one's under, oh, okay.
You may remember, we transferred that license once already, yet it's not seen to.
So 202, have they filed?
And 202 Washington Street, Olaya.
Yes.
So they're not open yet.
It says under renovation.
They're still under renovation?
Right, but we have to either renew or not renew on January 1st.
So, they're gonna. Did they get one last year but never used it?
Yes.
Yeah.
They haven't concluded their renovations yet.
Okay. They, they've got an alcoholic beverage license. I mean, several of these are also on the alcoholic beverage list, which I found troubling, because if they're out of business and closed, I don't see why they should have their license renewed.
You're talking about the, the first three?
Olaya, I think she's talking about Olaya.
Well, for sure, Olaya.
We know, we know that one because they came before us and sought, sought a transfer, so I think we're aware of that.
But, but I thought we did transfer it, and yet, has it gone back to them?
I think they, they withdrew, or they.
The transaction was never completed.
So they're, I think, seeking another transferee.
Okay. I thought we actually voted to transfer it.
We did, and then they, and then they withdrew that.
And we voted to withdraw, if I recall.
Well, I do think Selectman DeWitt has a point. If they didn't find someone to transfer to and they're holding an alcoholic beverage license and not using it, I mean, don't, don't.
I think that's a legitimate question. I mean, we've had this issue before. In order for you not to renew it, you'd have to hold a hearing and, you know, we can do that if you'd like.
And it can have.
Or you, I think sometimes you maybe have given a sort of a partial or, you know, just a short license.
A short renewal.
Yeah, like.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to give it to them through January and see if they can.
Either way, you have to have a hearing if you.
Right, and, and I, I actually have another matter, which I was gonna bring up, under alcoholic beverages, but I will say now, and that is, there are a number of things that we have discussed over several years that would require a public hearing, and we never scheduled the public hearing. So maybe we should think as a group about holding a public hearing to address some of these unresolved issues. One of them is that there were a number of violations, I don't need to describe when or where exactly, and at that time, we said that that particular entity should not be allowed to operate until 2:00 AM, seven nights a week. But that license continues to be until 2:00 AM, seven nights a week, because we never scheduled a public hearing to review it. And there are other ones that are sort of out there that never got addressed like that. And it just seems to me, maybe we want to think about how we can tie these loose ends up.
Well, do you have some names for us before we renew these for the year?
Well, you, you've got to do it. You can't not do it without a public hearing. That's the problem. That's how we got hung up before. And I, I have a file from last year, and it just got, you know.
And that's.
Slipped away.
And that's the point I wanna make on, on Olaya Cafe and Olaya. You know, to, to the extent that they're closed and they don't reopen and we want to rescind their license, that's a matter for another night for the.
Right, we can't do it now. I, I'm admitting, we cannot do it now. But I do think.
I thought, though, Mr. Kleckner is telling us we can give them a shorter than a year.
I wouldn't recommend it.
No? Okay.
Well, I don't know about how, how we wanna go ahead, but I do believe that it would be thoughtful, and maybe the licensing committee can take this up when we've finished dealing with some of our other pressing matters, but try to figure out which of these things need to be addressed, including the expiring licenses that didn't get renewed. And I'm less concerned about common victular than I am about alcoholic beverage.
Okay. I'm going back to item four now. The Economic Development Office received a complaint regarding the common victular liquor license held by Citroen Garden, 295 Washington Street. And the complaint was to the effect that they have, for some extended period of time, been advertising prices on their website that were a dollar below what they actually charged. And so when you got there to pick up your food, you actually got charged the current prices, I believe. So.
And that actually made me wonder, and I'm not proposing to do this, whether it would be appropriate, in the same way that we do stings, that we do some sort of random checking?
Let me, I see Mr. Maloney is there, and maybe you can come up to the microphone and tell us, were you aware of that complaint and?
I was just made aware of that issue this evening. Somebody forwarded the Boston.com tread of the, the situation. This particular issue would come under the health department. We would have our sealer of weights and measures investigate this because it's a consumer protection issue. So what I will do is make sure it's logged in and have our sealer investigate this. But it is correct, if, whether it's online, posted on the menu, there should be accuracy for the customer, so they do pay what they're expected, and that charge the different.
It's sort of a strange, but not totally unrelated thing that's, I don't know how we're ever gonna deal with, because it's out there in the ether or the cloud. There are, I believe, Olaya still has a website up. There are places that are, you can look up in a list of restaurants provided by third parties that indicate places that are, that are no longer operating as if they're still in existence. I don't know how we deal with that. It's just another.
And there are these third-party menu.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I meant, things like that.
That have old menus.
Yeah.
So this is.
They have old menus that are out of date with some prices.
This is evolving technology that, you know, when we talk about consumer protection, and I think this particular issue will cause others to, to think, you know, and visit their webpage, because the fines are triple, triple damages, and, and, so it is something we're looking at.
Is it your recommendation, Mr. Maloney, that we renew the common victular license and the liquor license of Citroen Garden and leave it to you to bring it back to us if there needs to be a hearing?
Absolutely, absolutely. We, this, you know, we have sporadic complaints throughout the year, and this would be something that I wouldn't feel rises to the threshold of holding their annual license. But we'll investigate, and if we find there's a blatant issue, we'll bring it to the board's attention for addressing.
Yes. Selectman Waschinsky?
Okay, you're chairing. I was waiting. So, let's come back to that third-party menu page. So this third party was no relationship with, or with the, with the restaurant has incorrect prices. How can you hold that third party liable?
Are the, the restaurant liable for the third party? Or the third-party restaurant for the liable? I don't know the answer.
I, I think we'd have to drill down and see what that relationship is. We've had, over the years, complaints, and minimal, but a complaint or two regarding some of these delivery services. And when we drilled down, we found out, well, there was a, a relationship, because they don't just walk in and say, "I'm gonna deliver you food." They do establish something. So as such, I think some education to the operator, when you enter these third-party situations, be advised, you know, it can reflect on your license.
So that's a delivery service, but then there are also these menu page sites that just post menus. And then there's no relationship. So, I, I don't.
Okay.
Sorry, Pat.
I'm gonna move favorable action on renewing the common victular licenses that are in this extensive sheet that we have. Kate, with the exception that those listed under item three will only be approved subject to the filing of the appropriate paperwork and fees, including the $50 late fee, and that those listed under item five are not included? Is that acceptable?
Well, five, they've never applied.
Okay.
And so we don't recommend.
They're not on the list.
We do not recommend renewing those.
But I don't think they're on the renewal list, are they?
They're, well, they're not.
I looked for them.
They're not in these materials.
Yeah, okay. If they're not on the list, I, I didn't, I didn't, I confess, I didn't look them up So I'll amend my motion to take out any mention of those in item five. All right, all in favor? Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Subject to recusal, aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Okay, now we can go to the entertainment licenses, weekly and Sunday.
I'm just gonna reiterate that some of these also have hours that if we had considered reviewing as the same hours apply to common vic, alcoholic beverage, and entertainment. So if we ever decide to address that question, entertainment would be, for those particular establishments, be part of it.
Well, I assume we have to vote all this by the end of the year. Do you wanna hold any of these until next week?
It doesn't make any sense. I think it'd be far better for us to come up with a list of affected establishments and then.
Okay.
Do public notice and say, you know, "We're trying to clean things up," or, you know, whatever.
Okay, well, most of these establishments are, are having radio music or taped music or TV. A few have live entertainment. I won't read the whole list, 'cause it's, it's not quite, it's, it's only seventeen pages.
Many, many pages, many pages.
The police, building, and health department under the, a common victular and food vendor inspections also are recommending, looked at these places and also recommending the entertainment licenses for 2015. So I'll move favorable action on there.
I have a question before we get to the vote. I'm looking at the last page of this packet, and the title, Sunday Entertainment Licenses. Is it, I'm a little confused as to why these were singled out.
I think it's a requirement that they have a separate license.
Because probably the hours have to be different under state law. Am I, are we right about that?
It requires a separate approval, a separate entertainment license for Sundays.
It's not clear that, that they actually take advantage of this, all of them. It's that they apply for it in case, I think.
So I'm looking at some of these establishments that are listed elsewhere in the packet, particularly page 13 is an example. There are businesses here that have Sunday through Saturday hours listed, so.
Right, that's part of what I was trying to say. We have these inconsistencies that we should fix, and the only way we can do it is with a public hearing.
Okay.
And I'm sorry. And I'm sorry, I didn't anticipate it because I thought of it last year and we didn't do it last year. I mean, I didn't realize, I'm sorry. At renewal time, I learned about this and we've now spent 11 months and we didn't do it.
Question, though, I want to be clear.
So there's one, two, three, four, five, six establishments listed on this last page.
Yeah, for Sunday.
And then on page 13, there were two establishments, the bottom two on the page, that have hours listed Sunday through Saturday. I'm wondering why those businesses aren't also listed on the Sunday entertainment license list.
Good question.
Five for Sunday.
Yeah, but I think that the ones on the back are live entertainment and the ones on page 13 are-
Except for the establishment-
You know, I actually believe these may, I think these ones that are Sunday entertainment licenses are probably very ancient in origin and that's part of what I was trying to say. There are a number of either changes in statute or practice that we just never reconciled. And only recently did we get a database that allowed us to see them as clearly as we can now.
One on page 13 is-
I have something to add, actually. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, yes, by all means.
Just from the application itself, it's the form of entertainment that makes them separate from the regular Sunday entertainment. So dancing, juke walks, and live entertainment requires a separate approval process.
Oh, thank you, Melissa.
I do notice, though, on page 13, Olaya is on there with, so some of them are fairly new. Radio, TV, and taped music, so they must be listening to that while they renovate.
Yeah. So I, thank you, Melissa. So I think that's the distinction. It's the form of entertainment, why they're listed separate.
Okay. I'm going to move favorable action then on the entertainment license renewals for 2015. All in favor, Slakman-Dewitt?
Aye.
Slakman-Goldstein?
Subject to my previously stated recusions, aye.
Slakman-Washinsky?
Aye.
Slakman-Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Okay. Next one is food vendor. And this is, I mentioned at the beginning, Mr. Maloney's memo concerning the Clear Flower Bakery. So they're obviously not in here and they need to apply. Police, building, and fire have inspected all locations listed and recommended approval, renewal for 2015. The Health Department recommends approval for 2015, subject to final inspection, including complete compliance with polystyrene and plastic bag band. The following food vendor is closed for business and has not filed for renewal, C2U Sushi at 5 Kendall Street. And the following food vendor has been approved for renewal but has not filed appropriate renewal paperwork, 6 Cypress Street, Olacito. It's recommended that this license be approved, subject to the filing of the appropriate paperwork and fees, including a $50 late fee. Again, I'm not going to read through the whole list of names. Any concerns or questions?
None.
Great. I'm going to recommend then favorable action with the exception of C2U Sushi, if it happens to be in there, and that Olacito at 6 Cypress Street would be subject to filing the appropriate paperwork and the $50 late fee. All in favor, Slakman-Dewitt?
Aye.
Slakman-Goldstein?
Aye.
Slakman-Washinsky?
Aye.
Slakman-Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Okay, we're on to in holder. Okay, the police, building, fire, and health departments have inspected all locations and recommend renewal for 2015 of the ones that are included on this list. And I believe, Mr. Maloney, that our list has been shrinking of inns and lodging houses, et cetera.
Lodging houses are separate.
Lodging houses are separate, okay.
Yeah, the lodgings are separate from the inns. The inns are the Holiday Inn-
And the Brookline Courtyard.
Correct.
So it's just those two. Okay, in this case, I will read them.
We hope this list is going to expand in the next couple of years.
Yes, yeah, right. Yeah. So the Holiday Inn on Beacon Street and the Brookline Courtyard by Marriott on Webster Street are the two that are listed. Any concerns, members of the board?
None.
I'll move favorable action, though, then on those license renewals for 2015. A lot of these memos, Kate, say 2014, but they should say 2015. So make sure that the minutes are correct on that. All in favor, Slakman-Dewitt?
Aye.
Slakman-Goldstein?
Aye.
Slakman-Washinsky?
Aye.
Slakman-Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Okay. Liquor.
Can I state my recusations on liquor? I recuse myself from consideration of 1648 Beacon Street, Public House, 14 Greed Street, Osaka Japanese, 714 Washington Street, Washington Square Tavern, the liquor wine malt license at 227A Cypress Street, Kirkman's Market, and to the extent that we're not renewing 1032 Beacon Street Mission Cantina, I also recuse myself due to a business relationship.
Okay. All right. Building and fire departments have inspected all locations listed and recommend renewal for 2015. The police department has inspected all locations and recommends approval and-
We actually have three that I believe we will want to be sure and perhaps you explicitly state, not renew.
Yes.
We're not voting to not to renew, but they did not submit.
Okay, but I think, at least I would identify, because we're saying all of the items on our list, please name those three as being exceptions.
Okay. And the Health Department recommends approval of law liquor license renewals, subject to final inspection, including compliance with the polystyrene and plastic bag band. The following license holders, liquor license holders are closed and did not renew their licenses, the Metropolitan Club at 1204 Boylston Street, Jimmy's at 1653 Beacon Street, and Mission Cantina at 1032 Beacon Street. So I, if those happen to be on the list still in any way, I will exclude them from my motion. The following liquor license holder is closed but renewed their license for 2015. And this is Olaya Cafe, as we previously discussed, at 195 Washington Street, so we will include that and will call them in for a hearing if they don't.
Reopen.
Reopen, right.
I'll note that in the fire department's memo, they were not able to inspect Olaya, so we should make-
Because it was closed.
Because it's under renovation.
Yeah.
So that, I would feel comfortable issuing that license condition on final inspection by the fire department.
Right, okay. So I'll make a motion for favorable action exempting the three I listed.
Okay, I have a question. I'm sorry. There is one about which I have mixed feelings, and that's the package store, GPS, which was given an ABC citation and actually has been suspended, will be suspended for 20 days in January 2015. There were some significant repeat violations of sales to minors. I don't know, we don't seem to have anybody here from Public Safety, so we can't really ask a question about it, but boy, would I ever want him to be on a monitored, monitoring list of some sort.
Lieutenant Hayes does address that in his memo.
Yeah, I know.
And it's probably a legal question because, you know, since the ABCC does have jurisdiction and they've had, they have done a sanction, can we do something more than that?
I'm not asking to do more. I guess what I want to do is keep them under close observation. That's my comment.
And that's what Derek Hayes recommends as well.
Yeah, I basically want, I don't know how to do this and maybe we don't do it in our vote, but in the public record, Kate, I would like it to be noted that ABCC has cited licensee GPS Wine and Spirits and for multiple violations of sales to minors and have suspended their license for 20 days. And I want us to pay close attention to this establishment over the next licensing period. That's all.
Okay. So, yes, okay. So I am moving favorable action then, exempting the three that did not apply to renew their licenses. We will include Olaya Cafe and we will include Olaya, but that is subject to the inspection by the fire department. Okay. And the language, Slakman-Dewitt wishes put in the record. We'll include that. Okay. All in favor, Slakman-Dewitt?
Aye.
Slakman-Goldstein?
Subject to previous stated recusions, aye.
Slakman-Washinsky?
Aye.
Slakman-Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Okay. Now we're up to lodging houses. This is, what's happening with the lodging houses, Mr. Maloney?
We had some lodging facilities that had to cancel their annual inspections and delayed it, so as a result, it delays our opportunity to give the board a favorable recommendation. So we've had a handful of those. Surprisingly, we have two facilities that have not responded to contact from our inspectional service nor-
Is that 91 Babcock and 57 Dwight?
Correct.
And they, your assumption is that they're not operating anymore?
That's correct. The buildings, when our inspectors did arrive, we sent them a notice and we showed up, the inspectional team was there, and there was no one there to greet us, and it appeared that the places were not occupied.
Not occupied by anybody.
Correct.
Huh. I'm just wondering, because that's, there's kind of a, you know, a niche of people without much money for whom the lodging houses have-
Yeah, these facilities traditionally were used under a, like a therapeutic program where there was counseling and services going on. And I'm not sure what, again, no communication, nobody responds.
Were those two related?
They were both related. So they're not the traditional where somebody would sign in. But it's still, it's, you know, concerning to us because the lodging facilities, there's a potential two properties that could be affordable housing.
Right.
I was wondering, perhaps if any of these groups of licenses would be held over for subsequent vote, maybe these would. I see there's a number of issues that might get clarified within the next week or two.
You just want to hold all of the lodging houses? Because I actually have a question about 89 Marion Street, which seems to me has a history of difficulties and they haven't gone away, but it's in the memo from Lieutenant Simmons. And I, it's sort of a different question about 400 Heath Street, which is Prime Minister College for the record.
Can you direct any of these questions to-
Well, I don't know that it's really, I mean, Pat knows 89 Marion for sure, very well, in person.
89 Marion Street has had code enforcement issues and we've requested police assistance on some of our inspections. So as a result, I think you're seeing the recommendation from the police for whatever issues have arisen there.
Well, what he's saying is that they've had an increased number of calls and that they have said they will continue to monitor. And I just guess I was wondering if you had any insight into whether things had deteriorated significantly or?
They were deteriorating this year. What did occur is we, and I believe the board, a name was presented for a new agent. And so for the past five months, we've had a new agent there and we've seen a turnaround.
Oh, good, okay.
However, we'll still monitor.
Sure.
That's what was needed. I think the agent just disappeared and as a result, this facility wasn't monitored adequately.
Got it.
And, but as you can see, we did not hold it up for code enforcement. So I think they're going in the right direction, but we'll keep a close eye on it.
I noticed too in here, I mean, Mr. Kletner's correct, there seemed to be a lot of things going on here. There's a number, the fire memo, they believe 91 Babcock and 57 Dwight were sold. They note that in their memo and they say 143 St. Paul is under construction, not occupied. But there's a whole long list that haven't had their annual inspections. I don't know what's going on there, but-
Yeah, that was, you know, we arranged, we attempted to arrange these starting in September and some operators say they're not ready for us, they delay the inspection.
This is from the fire department, though. Do you guys inspect together?
Exactly. The process is the Health Department sets up the annual inspections. So we set up the date and time that all the inspectional staff will show up at these facilities. So, and we go in as a team. We find the operators appreciate that and we get to look all of the eyes of the various departments at the same time. But this year, it was a struggle. We've had a number of cancellations and some saying, "We're not ready for you," and as a result, it delays our recommendation.
Well, there seems to be, yeah, a long list that haven't been inspected yet. Do you think it would be helpful for us to hold this for a week or two?
I don't think so. None of the ones that we couldn't get to have a history of code enforcement. I'd say, you know, if you vote pending a satisfactory inspection, getting results, and I'm hoping we're going to give positive inspection results before the end of the year, so they'll have a renewal for January 1st.
Okay.
Do we make the vote conditional on successfully being inspected?
Yes. There's actually language right on the front page that we-
But what about those other two establishments that appear empty? Are we just going to?
I think they're not on the list.
They didn't file.
Because they didn't file, so.
So like, not, yeah, well, we had others, you know, in the restaurants, there's some that didn't file, but we approved them, subject to filing and a late fee, but, you know, I don't know if that's the same-
I'm going to exempt those two. I'm going to move favorable action exempting 91 Babcock Street and 57 Dwight Street and the, recommending the others, subject to final inspection and approval by the Health, Building, and Fire Departments, and the filing of all appropriate paperwork and payment of all fees, including a $50 late fee for the 259 St. Paul Street that has neglected to file. All in favor, Slakman-Dewitt?
Aye.
Slakman-Goldstein?
Aye.
Slakman-Washinsky?
Aye.
Slakman-Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. No clients among the lodging houses?
None, none.
Well, one of them is the Children's Hospital, place where families, you know, family inn or whatever it's called. So you get a lot of troublemakers there? Yeah, just kidding.
No, I just think it's a matter of scheduling and what they have.
No, no, I'm joking. The Children's Hospital facility.
No, that shouldn't be, that's usually a walkthrough, so we shouldn't have any issues there.
So then we have the second-hand motor vehicle license renewals. Police, building, and fire have inspected all locations listed and recommended for renewal in 2015. Brookline Auto Body at 40 Aston Wall Avenue is closed and has not filed for renewal. And I have a question about that because I thought they were still doing something down in the basement, even when the teen center opened up above.
I thought they were parking cars there, maybe?
It's empty.
Okay.
I raised that issue this afternoon and I have to say, I got very busy and wasn't able to follow up. So I'm, I don't know what to say there because I think the same issue came up last year, didn't it?
Yeah, there was some.
What I remember is that the owner wanted to reserve access to some part of the building and I don't remember the details.
The teen center actually controls it.
But they haven't filed for renewal and so, you know. And I will note that the fire prevention approves the motor vehicles Class 1 for Audi of Brookline at 308 Boylston Street. I don't know. Were we supposed to, I didn't take public comment on any of these, Mr. Kletner?
Not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
Remember, we didn't schedule a public hearing. That's why we can't talk about some of these things.
So I'm going to move favorable action then on the second-hand motor vehicle license renewals for 2015 and with the exception of Brookline Auto Body at 40 Aston Wall Avenue. All in favor, Slakman-Dewitt?
Aye.
Slakman-Goldstein?
Aye.
Slakman-Washinsky?
Aye.
Slakman-Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. And I'm going to turn it back over to you.
And I will quickly turn it over to Mr. Kletner for some board and commission appointments.
Okay, Conservation Commission. We have vacancy and two expiring terms, so a total of three slots available. And we have three members who are actually four members. Let's see, we have- Let's see, we have one, two, three...
Three incumbents and one new candidate.
That's, that's right.
I just wonder, I should have asked this sooner, but did anyone ask the associate member if they wanted to move up?
Yes, she does not.
And she did not?
Correct. So, again, four candidates for three slots for the permanent members, but there are two different terms here, so I think I'm going to take the 2014 terms first, and I will take the highest vote-getters for those...
And I think if Marion Lazar wants to stay as an associate member, then we have three candidates, including two incumbents...
Right.
Who want to be on the Conservation Commission.
I'm sorry, Marion shouldn't be on, right.
So, we, a vacancy, yeah.
That's right. So, there are three, and there's three incumbents, but they are two different terms, so I'm going to have to take...
Right. We have to vote the terms or, and also who's going to be associate.
Well, Marion apparently wants to stay as an associate.
But we still have to vote that, right?
Yes.
So, take the first, the first non-associate member.
I was going to do the longer term, so we have two slots for 2014 terms, which will be the full three years, and so what I was going to do is list three names, and the two highest vote-getters would get the two longer terms. Is that okay?
How about they all get five votes?
I'm not sure I understand, Mr. Kletner. What's the...
Well, you can't. You can only vote for two people.
What are the shorter terms? I'm not sure.
One's three-year term, expiring in '17, and then Ms. Bodich is a short term because she resigned in the middle, so she, I don't think we'd give...
Wouldn't it be appropriate to think about renewing Werner and Matthew for their full three-year terms and giving the newcomer the two-year term?
Yeah. Okay, so let's do that. So, Werner Lowey.
Aye.
Matthew Garvey.
Aye.
Okay, for the 2015 term, Pallavi Kalia Mandi.
Aye.
All right. So, now the associate member, there's one expiring term, it's Marion Lazar, and she's interested in reappointment. Marion Lazar.
Aye.
All right. Trustee's of Walnut Hill Cemetery, have a similar situation there, but we have two, two vacancies and one short, two vacancies and an expiring term, but two, one of those terms is only for, through 2016, so do we want to do it in the same, same manner?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, let's see, Gerard Hayes.
Aye.
So, then the next one, these are two new candidates, so I really can't do what you or we did the last one.
I propose Nina Brown be nominated for the vacancy that is 2014.
Okay. For that term, Nina Brown.
Aye.
Okay. I think that was unanimous. And then for the 2016 term, Peggy McGuire.
Aye.
Thank you.
And that concludes our meeting, and thank you all. Meeting is adjourned.